Members, we have pre-selected, two pre-selected agenda items that we'd like for discussion. The way I intend to do this is I'm going to take up item 16, which is the ETOD item first. Is that the Angels? I knew they were all attending our meetings these days, but is that all right? Good. Item number 16 is the ETOD item. We're going to take that up first, and the reason we want to take that up first is we have a couple of our staff people that we know we're going to have questions for that have, as I understand it, excuse me, an airplane to catch, and so we want to make sure that they, since we've called on them to help us out, we don't make them miss that. Then we will take up item 22. At that point, we will take up the briefing on the Climate Equity Plan. The word "brief" in briefing, the root word is "brief." I'm just noticing that. That's the first time I've ever noticed that. And then we will go into an executive session, and I'll appropriately announce the executive session at the time. So, I'll turn to the city manager on item number 16.
Mayor, members of council, can everybody hear me? There's been a lot of discussion about this item, and deservedly so. It's important for our city, and it's important for the neighborhoods that surround these districts that we're talking about. But I wanted just to lay the predicate of what we're trying to get accomplished today. One is simply, we're kicking off the process by which we then will begin to evaluate the changes that need to be made to the code development, and then the changes that we need to make to the Austin plan, or Imagine Austin Plan. And so I want to, and that process is going to involve a lot of community input, a lot of involvement by, not just neighborhoods, but people who are interested in this very important topic and issue. So there's going to be plenty of time for public input. It'll come back to the Planning Commission. There'll be public hearings. There'll be ordinance amendments. Those will be voted on by the commission, come back to council for review. And my last tour duty here, those were additional public hearings we have at this forum, so that the citizens could be properly heard. And so I just wanted to do that as a predicate, product of this presentation.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. We actually don't have a formal presentation prepared right now, but we do have staff from both the Project Connect office and the Housing and Planning Department that have been working diligently on the Equitable Transit Oriented Development Policy Plan, and we're happy to answer any questions. I think City Manager Garza gave a good overview of the objectives of the action on Thursday.
All right. Council, I do think there's been quite a bit of information supplied, so why don't we just start the discussion with the council, and I'll recognize Councilmember Poole first.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks to our city manager, and thank you, Rosie, for sending the email memo, I think it was early this morning or late last night, that gives a really good, comprehensive assessment of the process, where we are in the process, what is and is not ahead of us, and what we are and are not doing. And I had numerous emails come in from neighborhoods in District 7 expressing concerns and some confusion over what they were reading. And what I wanted to do, just to kick this off, could you possibly review the memo that you sent to us all? I will be forwarding it to everybody who has written it, written to me, and putting it out in an email blast, but the information that you have lodged in that email is really important, and perhaps that would be a good way to start today, to do some level-setting on what is and is not happening, what the process is, and where we are in the process.
Sure. I'm happy to do that, and I know my team will jump in if I start to go awry here. The action that we're requesting on March 9th would do four primary things. First, it will accept the ETOD policy plan. It will initiate amendments to the Imagine Austin Comprehensive Plan to incorporate the ETOD station areas and their identified typologies into the growth concept map, again initiating, as City Manager Garza said, that will all run through a process. There will be ample public communication and opportunities for probably more discussion than all of us are ready to undertake. This just starts us on that journey. It authorizes the city manager to coordinate with Cap Metro to incorporate the ETOD policy plan tools for the Green Line and Metro Rapid stations within the boundaries of the Northeast Austin District planning process. As you guys all know, this was a process that was initiated a couple of years ago, and we're in the process of consultant selection right now, and this is a way to achieve some efficiencies. We have a consultant that's already working on areas that touch around transit. It makes sense to have them incorporate this policy plan as part of the toolkit that they use for the more detailed planning of the Northeast Austin District area. That change doesn't really affect staff capacity or the budget that we have for that particular planning effort. It just incorporates the policy components. And lastly, it will initiate several focused system-wide amendments to the Land Development Code to implement the ETOD policy plan, and we can go into more detail about that here in a moment. There are a number of things, this is a policy document, and it's going to serve as a framework for a host of activities related to implementing the ETOD development in Austin over the years ahead. The policy plan describes activities that are already underway, as well as those that could be taken in the future, and the draft resolution includes initiation of several recommended near-term activities that I just went over. Those all require formal council direction, including initiation of those code amendments. We're also going to begin working on the next steps that don't require formal council action, which include analyzing our existing density bonus programs, consulting with ETOD implementation leads to identify financing and programmatic support for meeting the ETOD goals, including funding and resource gaps. We're going to be developing an equity scorecard to evaluate proposed ETOD development projects. This will be developed in parallel to the overlay and brought back to council as a package, and developing an affordable housing on publicly-owned land goal to provide additional guidance for planning efforts. We'll also be collaborating with Cap Metro and other public agencies on the Strategic Real Estate Portfolio Analysis Tool. All things that are next on the list, but don't require us to have formal council initiation. So we can go through the more detailed aspects of the draft resolution. I'll probably turn that over to staff to do, but I wanted to do a little bit of, have a little bit of an opportunity to talk about what this does not do. This does not designate all bus stops in the city as ETOD locations. That's something that we have heard. That is definitely not what is happening. The ETOD policy plan includes Project Connect initial investment commuter rail stations, light rail transit stations, and metro rapid stations. It does not include regular bus stops. There's a map within the draft ETOD policy plan for Project Connect light rail and bus transit stations, and additionally, it is likely that proposed regulations surrounding commuter rail or light rail stations will differ from proposed regulations around metro rapid stations. So the light rail station policies will be different than what we would recommend for bus rapid transit stations. This does not change zoning regulations or funding. Acceptance of the ETOD policy plan does not change any regulations, programs, tools, funding, or city investments. Some of the tools would need to have funding or resources identified before they could be implemented. Other tools may eventually result in changes to zoning or regulations near some Project Connect stops, but cannot be implemented without first council initiating changes, then staff working with the community to develop a proposal, and then future notice and public hearings, and lastly, council voting to adopt them. Additionally, there are many tools listed in the ETOD policy plan that will need to be assessed for where they should be applied to help meet the six ETOD policy goals. The assessment will take place as part of future phases of the work. This does not do away with single-family zoning. The city's existing code provisions for transit-oriented development prohibit new construction of single-family housing within gateway or midway zonings, or zones, inside existing TODs. However, staff does not envision using the existing TOD designations in the current code as part of the updated ETOD planning process, or interim regulations for the overlay. Staff is specifically requesting that council direct us to work with the community to create interim regulations for ETOD and an ETOD overlay as described in the ETOD policy plan. The existing transit-oriented development code provisions would not apply to any new areas. And I did wanted to say something about the urgency of the work. Accepting the plan on March 9th, on Thursday, allows us to begin the steps of implementing, and it's key to the success of the ETOD and the wider Project Connect program, for the following reasons. First, it's important that we move forward to implement ETOD quickly, ahead of design and construction of the Project Connect system, in order to guide public and private development. The ETOD policy plan supports and improves Project Connect's grant competitiveness, for Federal Transit Administration capital investment grants, small starts and new starts funding, and we have staff here that can help address any questions that come up about that. And then lastly, taking action related to ETOD on March 9th would align with the timelines of various related Project Connect community engagement and public decision-making processes that will begin over the next several months. Happy to go into any detail about the code work, but I want to just open it up there for any further questions.
I really appreciate that high-level, but very detailed overview. I'd also emphasize that the work that we are engaged in here has some pretty deep roots from years back. It is built on numerous ordinances that have been passed and are in effect. And then specifically, two issues that have been brought to my attention that residents were really concerned about was the all-bus stops become ETOD locations. We know that that is, we have discussed that before, and that is not the intention here at all, because bus stops can move and be relocated. And that's also why the rail lines are so important, because they are fixed, and we can rely on them. There is some predictability about them remaining there far into the future. And then the really concerning piece that came to my attention earlier this week about doing away with single-family zoning. That is not, in fact, what this is about, and I would note that one of the TODs that is successfully being planned is in District 7. It's one of the three that had been greenlit in the past, and there's housing there, and there's single-family housing in that TOD, and that's there deliberately and with purpose. So, again, I will continue to amplify this information and assure my constituents and hopefully the rest of the city that what we are engaged in here is not, in fact, undermining the neighborhoods or their quality of life. In fact, we hope to enhance it tremendously. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to anybody else, let me ask if anybody else would like to ask questions about the memo. I think that might be a good way to proceed. Councilmember Ryan Alter.
I just have one question. It is on page 2, under the establishing interim regulations that apply to ETODs. The last sentence there, you say, "Staff is requesting that council initiate code amendments that would allow staff to review the existing initial regulations and propose new or revised interim regulations." Is that separate from what we're doing here? Do y'all need a separate?
That's part of the resolution that is prepared for consideration on Thursday.
I just wanted to make sure you weren't needing, let's do more.
Councilmember Vela, did you have a question?
I did. It's somewhat related to the memo, but are there any firm goals in terms of the number of people that are envisioned to live within a TOD, like kind of population goals for the TOD specifically?
Steve here, Warner.
Hi, good morning. Warner Cook, Principal Planner with the Housing and Planning Department. So there are not specific goals per station area. One thing that we did look at when creating the typologies was the number of people that live in station areas today, and so what we did was actually target, using FTA kind of criteria, what those thresholds are that they're looking for, just so you can get an idea of if it's listed in the policy plan as more people today, then that means that it's kind of meeting the target in the area for rail stations, a medium-high score, and for bus stations, metro rapid stations, a medium score. And then if it says fewer people today, then that's one that isn't quite performing, but as other people can speak to, it's not about every single station meeting that threshold. It's really about more of the corridor.
And that's a very good point. It's a weighted average, basically, of all of the stations. We're not looking, you know, clearly, for example, there's going to be a lot more population density in the West Campus Station than there is, you know, on another station, you know, farther kind of north outside of the urban core. But so, in terms of the population goals, though, we're talking about on page, I'm sorry, 65, I guess it's A9, 65 on the PDF, A9 of the attachment, that those numbers where the, you know, a high area would be 15,000 and above in the, I guess at the half-mile, the area around the, and then the medium would be 5760 to 9,599, oh no, I'm sorry. Medium would be 9,600 to 1499 for the rail. And are we targeting the, in the plan, the medium-high level for the stations?
Stevie Greathouse, Division Manager, Housing and Planning Department. We have not set specific targets in the plan, so really what the plan is doing is setting kind of a course and a directionality, and we are set up with the way that the plan is currently drafted, to document and monitor and make sure that the stations are moving in the right direction, which would be moving towards that sort of weighted average that Warner's talking about. But the plan itself, as it's currently drafted and is in front of council today for, this week for consideration, does not include any specific targets for housing.
And why not?
From staff's perspective, we have the Austin Strategic Mobility Plan that does set goals and targets that we track and do on a scorecard. We are planning on continuing to, did I say strategic, Strategic Housing Blueprint, thank you, Warner, Strategic Housing Blueprint that does set goals at a district and corridor level around the city, and we didn't want to have, set up a plan where we're kind of setting ourselves up on two separate sets of tracking and two separate sets of goals that are overlapping and complicated, when really what we are trying to do is make sure that with this planning efforts, we're moving in the right direction, and that we can kind of track that directionality. That certainly, we've heard, you know, a desire that some folks have to be able to set those targets at either the corridor or the station level. That's certainly something that we could monitor and track if folks wanted to set a target, but we hadn't had the ability with this planning process to go into the level of depth and community dialogue that it would take to appropriately set those targets, so we are not coming this week with targets to recommend.
And councilmember, I think if I understand your question, give us some time to work through that issue, to come back with a recommendation on the housing targets, so that we can take care of that sensitivity that was just mentioned. I think it is something that we need to try to address, but I don't think we're ready to say it out of the one way or the other until we get some more defense.
My concern is that those are very vague and kind of nebulous, you know, goals, and I, if we don't have, you know, fixed goals that we're moving towards, then that, how does that not guide our plan? Especially in the downtown urban core stations, you know, we're going to, I don't see the problem with saying that we want this to be a very dense, you know, commercial area with, you know, potentially like 25,000 people living in that, you know, half-mile radius around the station. How do we, what do we need to zone this in order to make that happen? You know, and so that lack of kind of a firm goal for population densities around the station concerns me.
If I could add, city manager, mayor, council, Anik Bode, Project Connect office, that work, that's very important, and the city manager is correct, that work will come as we sync up with the project development process for the investment that is on our horizon that we will be deciding this summer. We have a kickoff March 21st in coordination with our partners at Austin Transit Partnership and Capital Metro to look at scenarios for our investment in light rail transit. Once we have that in coordination with Rosie's group at Housing and Planning, we can start looking at where exactly along those corridors it makes sense to have those targets, and to start to hone in more specifically, as the city manager pointed out.
And I appreciate that, and you mentioned that there's another plan that also has population goals for the corridor. Which plan was that?
I was mentioning the Strategic Housing Blueprint, which did set district-based goals, and in some cases corridor-based goals for housing accommodation.
And if I remember correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we're way under those goals.
And my director can address that with her nodding head.
The head is nodding, yes.
Okay. And I appreciate that, and again, my concern is that if we're not even setting goals, hard number goals for individual stations, identifying, saying like, you know, this station, let's say like the government-centered station, again, to pick a downtown one, which doesn't have a lot of population around it at this point, you know, we've got to really commit and say that, you know what, we want, because I know we're going to have stations that are farther up north, that are not going to have, you know, 9,000 people in the half-mile radius, you know, we're going to have, they're much more surrounded by neighborhoods that are not going to develop in the same way that other stations are, and if we don't have those hard goals, I'm concerned that we're not going to get the ridership and increase in housing units that we're, and again, affordable housing units go along with, I mean, those, you know, 10% of a higher number is a good thing, you know what I mean? 10% of 2,000 is more than 10% of 1,000, so that's just kind of my sense of things. Thank you, Mayor.
So I would just want to reiterate that we agree with you, and that's what comes next, as we get into individual station areas. This is just the high-level policy plan that sets the framework for how we're going to do those efforts.
Councilmember Fontas.
Thank you, and thank you for mentioning that, Director Trulow, because I just wanted to point out for our colleagues, our Mobility Committee met this past week, and our Housing Committee, we had a joint committee, we had a conversation, and from my understanding, because I also raised similar concerns about not having concrete goals, and knowing how we are so off-track on our Strategic Housing Blueprint, you know, how can we best develop an implementation strategy? And from my understanding, what was shared during the committee meeting was that staff would come back with more of those concrete, clearly-defined metrics that I think includes the production of affordable housing, but also I would like it to include the preservation of existing affordable housing along those lines as well.
Thank you. Anybody else want to talk about the memo? Sure.
You mentioned density bonus review. Is that specific or all?
Yes, Warner Cook, again. So we, through our process working on ETOD in the last year and a half, you know, we didn't have time to look at how every density bonus overlays, and since what we're proposing is possibly another ETOD overlay, staff recognized the need to, many of these existing programs are very similar to each other with key details, right? And it can be very difficult, as somebody looking to use one of them, to keep all those details. It's also a lot of staff time to be able to, like, really focus in on each of those. So we're interested in reviewing the existing requirements in light of the work that we're going to do with the community to possibly propose another program, so that if there's opportunities to streamline, or, you know, make things similar to one another, so that it's more easy to get through the development process, that's something staff is very interested in doing.
I would just echo something that Councilmember Vela mentioned the other day in our committee hearing, part of that V Uno, and how that has functioned, and potentially using that as a model for some of these stations.
Mayor, I'm going to recognize the mayor, Pro Tim, but I forgot to note when the mayor, Pro Tim, she's been here since we started this discussion, so for the record.
I'm present and accounted for.
Yes.
Could you talk a little bit more about the Strategic Housing Blueprint, and, you know, which corridors align with Project Connect and which ones maybe don't? Because I know when it was built, Project Connect was still very much a twinkle in someone's eye.
I'm not even sure. I'm keeping in mind the Strategic Housing Blueprint was approved in 2017, so it was well before, but folks that have maps in front of them maybe, or just roughly, is it, you know, half and half, is it 80, 20, you know?
Strategic Housing Blueprint really followed some of the growth corridors shown in the Imagine Austin Growth Concepts, so to the extent that those overlap with Project Connect corridors, there's overlap between the two. There are probably a few Project Connect corridors that don't run down growth corridors, and vice versa, there's actually some growth corridors in Growth Concept that don't, but it is, the Venn diagram is, if I had to just, you know, guess, is probably a 60, 70% match.
Okay, that's pretty helpful. And yes, I will flag, if someone's got extra time between here and Thursday, we had a pretty robust discussion at our last Mobility Committee meeting, and it, all in all, went about two and a half hours, with maybe 30, 40 minutes for Q and A, but there were a lot of different presentations between Capital Metro's involvement and public engagement, you know, the city planning side, and then we even had a kind of rapid-fire panel of housing advocates, Urban Land Institute, you know, a professor from UT, other folks that have been involved in this conversation for a long time, so if you want to dig into those presentations, they should be archived in the backup from last Thursday.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I want to ask a couple of questions about the memo.
Yeah, of course.
Based upon questions that I'm receiving from people, and I also, I echo what Councilmember Poole said, is this is a very helpful document, but I want to, I know what kind of questions I'm going to get based upon the document. And I want to start on the first page, bullet number two under "Action Requested." It begins, initiates amendments to the Imagine Austin Comprehensive Plan, and then the fourth bullet also says, "Initiate several focused, system-wide amendments to the Land Development Code." For clarity purposes, while that initiates those amendments in both of those instances, that's not setting anything in concrete, or even setting a path on what might happen in terms of amendments to the Imagine Austin Comprehensive Plan, or the system-wide amendments to the Land Development Code. It will not, it does not set out what will happen, and doesn't even create the first step in a path to what will happen. Is that correct?
It opens the door to allow us to start having conversations. As staff, we cannot initiate code amendments. That has to be done either by the city council or by the Planning Commission, and we recognize that these are some critical things that we need to start to address in some shape, form, or fashion, and this allows us that opportunity.
So what it does is it legally allows for the discussion about those amendments, but it does not in any way preordain outcomes and the process, that process is yet to be carried out.
Very true.
Okay. On page two, I would like for you to describe, the first bullet says, "It does not designate all bus stops in the city as ETOD locations." But yet, it sets out, it sets out that there will be metro rapid stations that will, and I would like for you, if you, that will be designated as ETOD locations. We have heard, as Councilmember Poole indicated, and you all know, we've heard, otherwise you wouldn't have had this bullet in here. We know that there's a lot of concern and question about the bus station aspects. I would like for there to be, if you don't mind, a greater description of how there's a difference between metro rapid bus stations and everyday bus stations.
Stevie Greathouse, I will attempt to answer that one. So under the Project Connect system, and actually under today's system, we have metro rapid lines that provide service that's a little bit closer to rail service, that has dedicated lanes in some locations, the stop spacing is separated, the stops themselves typically have a little bit more infrastructure involved in construction of the stop themselves, and they function more sort of closer to the way a rail will function in the future. And then we have all of the sort of daily buses running around Austin, local bus service that have close stops, the stops can move around as they frequently do, and every time Capital Metro does a service change, that are really providing kind of lower-intensity service with bus stations that function a little bit, you know, that function like bus stations and not like rail stations. So from the perspective of the Equitable TOD Policy Plan, and the discussions that we've had with community to develop that plan, and the direction that we received from council that initiated the work to develop that plan, indicated that we should look at making sure that we were including both the future metro rapid lines, which are those kind of higher-capacity transit lines that function a little bit more like rail, in the work that we're doing to look at both metro rail and light rail lines as well. And so the policy plan that is before council for consideration this week looks at all 98 station pairs on both the rapid bus system, the light rail system, as well as the metro rail system. And the resolution that is in front of council this week would propose to make, to initiate, as we just discussed, changes to the code that would provide new regulations at stops for both the light rail system, or I keep saying both, but it's actually three, the light rail system, the metro rail system, and the future rapid bus system. The part of the reason behind that, in addition to the communication from council and community that we had sort of leading up to the plan of looking at our full system, including those bus lines that function, that are the rapid bus lines that function a little bit more like rail, is that the system, as we build it out over time, will be, could be transitioning. In some cases, we will have lines, like we do today, that are rapid bus, that will be transitioning to become rail lines. transitioning to become rail lines. In other cases, like the Gold Line on the Project Connect Vision Plan, we have something that has been identified in the Vision Plan as a future Light Rail line that will be starting out before it becomes a future Light Rail line, will probably spend some period of time as a Rapid Bus line. So from staff's perspective and the reason the recommendation is written the way it is, we would be differentiating the regulations. There would definitely be a need, and as Rosie mentioned in the summary of the memo, the regulatory needs are different at Rapid Bus and rail. So there's no intention to treat the two systems the same, but at least the proposal that is currently on the table would direct staff to initiate changes that would potentially make changes to regulations along both the Rapid Bus system and the Light Rail and Metro Rail systems.
Great. Thank you for that. On the urgency of the work, could you tell, could you describe what the timeline is needed for us to meet the FTA guidelines? When you first were laying this out, you talked about that, and that's a key reason we're moving now. And I would like for you to kind of outline that in more detail about, and let me add what was going to be my second question. My second question to that would be, is why do we move on this now when, as we know, it hasn't really been decided? And as you pointed out, on the 21st, there will begin that process of laying out what we might actually see in terms of the lines, including Metro Rapid and all that. So why now when we're not sure what ATP might actually end up doing?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take that for the group. Anique Bode with the Project Connect Office. And I'd like to invite up Jennifer Pine, who's with the Austin Transit Partnership, to also, to help me address this question. As you know, the tax revenue election that happened in 2020, city revenues collected and transferred to Austin Transit Partnership to focus on the design and implementation of Light Rail. Jennifer is the Executive Vice President for ATP over Planning and Controls. We work very closely together on monitoring what's happening with the ETOD plan as it syncs up with the project development phase of the New Starts Grant Project, Grant Process, which we are currently in. I have a couple of comments before I turn it over to Jen to talk about timing and why now. To add on to what Ms. Greathouse said, you know, the characteristics of Metro Rapid are more similar to a fixed, a fixed Light Rail line than they are to a local bus stop. They're less likely to move. It doesn't mean that they can't, but they're less likely. The infrastructure for the stops are much more intense, and if you want to go out to the Pleasant Valley Line or to the Expo Line, they are currently under construction. So we, we've been making great progress on the first two lines of the four that were approved by voters in 2020. So that's an important distinction. They're more fixed than a local bus stop. As we prepare for our grant application, and Jen will talk a little bit more about that, as you can imagine, there's a lot of work that goes into that application. And so moving forward with the ETOD plan is the first step. The city has control of land use regulations, not ATP, not Cap Metro. That is our, and it is, and land use, future and existing, is a part of the FTA criteria. It's not the only part, and we have some slides to show you how the ETOD work actually fits into that FTA criteria. So I know that we are looking at our first scoring, scoring event with the FTA in summer of next year, 2024, which is not that far away. And there's a lot of work that needs to be done before that. So I'm going to hand it over to Jen to explain that timeline.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Jennifer Pine. I'm with Austin Transit Partnership. So the timeline for the federal process, as has been mentioned, you know, we are looking to engage in a community dialogue starting later this month and ultimately, you know, affirm this summer what the definition of the Light Rail project is that we're going to continue to advance. So as part of the pursuit of federal funding, that takes years, and there are a number of different gates. And what Anique was referring to as far as a preliminary rating of the project, which is critical, obviously, to being competitive and obtaining those federal funds, we would be putting together that package for submittal next spring. So any work done in the next year, you'd be able to take credit for, as it were. And so the slide that's up on the screen is just to talk a little bit about what the FTA considers. And this looks like a little bit of a complicated graphic, but I can break it down simply that about half of it has to do with the financial commitment, you know, our commitment of funds. And we're actually in pretty good shape that way. You know, ATP is prepared to finance using Prop A and the federal funds for not only the capital costs, but also operations and maintenance costs. So we're actually in great shape there. So on the left side of the equation is the project justification, which is the merits of the project. We're competing with other projects from across the country. And so this is their way of normalizing that evaluation to award projects funds. So probably the items that are most directly related to the topics we're concerned with here this morning are land use and economic development. And so that is looking quite specifically at what is the population density within a half mile of each station area and how many jobs are located there that would then be accessible by this Light Rail project. In addition, they also look at parking and presence of affordable housing. On the economic development side, that's your more qualitative assessment. They're really looking at plans and policies that have been put in place to promote transit-supported land use. As you know, this is a generational type of project, and the long-term view, in some ways, is just as important as the current conditions. And so that intentionality to support transit-supported land use, a mix of uses, a sufficient density is of great importance in assessing the merits of the project.
Thank you for that. And then my last, I think that covers, I just wanted to make sure we had a record of what the time situation is. And I meant to ask a question a little bit earlier that on Metro, on Metro Bus and on simple, what we call regular bus stations, when I think of regular bus station, I think most people think of maybe a place to sit, a sign that says this is a bus stop, maybe, maybe a place to get out of the rain, but that's different than the stations that you're talking about that are currently being built. Is there a way to identify those and make sure that we have a definition of them in this resolution so that people will know what are the actual places that will be impacted as opposed to routine bus stops?
I would say yes.
Sorry. I was saying yes also, luckily.
By the way, I think that's, I'm glad you're consistent, because that may be the right answer. So, yes.
Yes. There are maps actually throughout the, in the ETOD policy plan draft itself, there is a map that shows the location of the future Metro Rail, Metro Light Rail, and the Metro Rapid stations, and we could absolutely reference that in the resolution.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all very much. Councilmember Ryan.
I wanted to say that. Am I on? She sent that memo at 10 o'clock last night, so thank you for doing that. I hope you didn't come in before 8 o'clock this morning.
Well, you know, I did, but it was only because I had to drop off the kids at the middle school. But I want to recognize Warner and Stevie and Erica Leek and Andrea Bates, who were working with me until 10 o'clock last night to get that put together so that we could be able to have some good information for you to.
Thank you for doing that. I'm going to go to Councilmember Ryan Alter and then Councilmember Poole, and then I'll go to Councilmember Allison Alter.
I just want to follow up on one thing you mentioned, and that was about density within a half mile as they're analyzing it. Is that current? Or if we were to change the zoning, how would that interplay with their scoring saying, well, it's not very dense right now, but they've just changed it because it's going to be a rail line? How does that work?
So they do look at current and future conditions. So we would be providing information on what's there now using, because the existing census data and Campo forecasts, and also looking at plans and policies, what's being promoted, what's anticipated in that area.
Okay. Thanks.
I would add to that, too, in talking with Jen, that once we submit in the summer of 2024 for, most likely for initial scoring, towards the end of the process, they'll relook at our numbers, and that would be an opportunity to show what they call demonstrated progress on plans and policies. So passing a plan and policy is one thing, showing demonstrated outcomes of those plans and policies is also, would be the most important part, right? And so towards the end of the process, we'll have the opportunity to see the outcomes of some of our policies, whether they be land use, whether they be parking, whether they be related to connectivity and local mobility, first-last-mile type improvements, which was also on that chart. So there's a lot of things that go into that non-funding 50% that we, that we're doing well. But again, we'll have an opportunity to show the demonstrated outcomes of the actions.
Councilmember Poole, then Councilmember Allison Alter.
I wanted to add to the conversation about density to remind the dais and all of us who are working through all of the various threads and the important pieces, that the displacement dollars still need to be brought into this equation, and we need to be cognizant of our timing. If we are looking at changing what the zoning is on a piece of land, that could very well and likely will increase the costs. But we need to first, I think, and it says what we have on a policy level been promising, take care of the people who are living in those areas now and who may be displaced so that they don't lose their homes. So I would ask that we kind of remember that and focus on that and do it in sequence so that we can get that taken care of before we may move into taking some actions that would tend to increase the value of the soil that we're, that we're focused on, if that makes sense to everybody.
Yes, it does. Yeah, sure. Councilmember Allison Alter.
Thank you. I want to just reflect that from what I've learned about TODs and ETODs, just because you designate something, a TOD or an ETOD, doesn't mean that you solve the mobility issues and create a space where more people are using transit and giving up their cars. So I think it's, it's very important that we be intentional here, and we understand that there's no guarantee if we move forward with an ETOD that it's actually going to do what we hope it does. There are very few of these projects that actually function. Very often, you end up creating a lot of market-rate housing, and the people who are in there are still using their cars. So just as we, as we move forward with this process, I think we have to keep that very much in mind. With respect to the memo, I wanted to just clarify what is happening to the existing TODs. So we have nine designated TODs, three of which that were cited in there, and it doesn't sound we're doing very well on those measures, which is the impetus for trying to do it in an equitable way. But what happens to the six TODs that haven't been planned, that we have been long saying we wanted to be TODs? Do they become ETODs now? And what happens to the existing three that have gone further in the process?
Yes, we'll tackle that question. So part of what is being recommended in the resolution as a code amendment would be to go and look at the existing regulations that are called the initial regulations that apply to that set of nine. And actually, it's slightly less than nine because a few of them just had points on a map and didn't ever get boundaries that the regulations applied within. But staff is proposing, as part of that, a code amendment to really go look at those code provisions, see if they still make sense, if it will still make sense to have sort of a separate kind of set of TODs that have one set of regulations and ETODs that have another, or if it makes sense to revise the regulations and consolidate them in a way to cover the entire Project Connect system. So that's a part of what's being initiated with the code amendment. With respect to the three stations that have existing station area plans and regulating plans in place, those station area plans and regulating plans would absolutely stay on the ground until we are at a place that we're ready to propose either corridor-based or station-based planning services to either modify those plans or replace them. So that's a slightly, those are two slightly separate discussions because we recognize that those, those station area plans and regulating plans had quite a bit of community engagement, interest, desire around those plans. So that would be, that would be kind of future stages as we move towards doing focused station area vision planning in a particular location to look at how we'd need to modify those plans. But for the right, the base initial regulations themselves in the code today, we are proposing with this resolution to take a look at those in concert with the proposal that we have to discuss interim regulations that would apply to a larger set of stations.
Thank you. And for the FTA funding process, obviously, the rail costs more than the bus rapid transit. So when we're looking at that chart, is that largely for rail, or how do we think about that? You know, because one of, one of the choices we have is where we put our resources and our prioritization, even if we have a plan that says you want to eventually do it for ETOD, there is an argument, I think, to be made that you should focus on the rail first. But I just want to understand what the FTA process, you know, how much of that is based on what we do with rail, or is it both, or how is that working?
So the slide I had up there in the process I was referring to is for the New Starts Grant Program, which is for Light Rail. Those are for the larger transit investments. Some of the Metro Rapid projects actually recently received small starts grants already. And the process is not dissimilar, but maybe a little different. So that slide was primarily referring to Light Rail.
Okay. So the, the bus ones have already gotten the smart start?
Yeah. Yes, it's called small starts.
Small start, sorry.
Just because it is smaller, a smaller cost. Yes, the Expo Center and Pleasant Valley Metro Rapid projects have received their federal funding.
In fact, the, the federal FTA administrator will be here this weekend, on Friday, to do a ceremony for that signing of that grant agreement for Metro Rapid and Expo, which is very exciting.
Great. Well, congratulations for those who've been working on that. That leads me to my next question, which is, you know, with timing and staffing, and I'm not sure if that's this memo or not. I am concerned about whether trying to do everything, we do nothing, we've done that for many years here. And I think we all agree around the rail stations that, that we should be putting the density in those areas. How does this plan allow for that flexibility and that prioritization? So we have a plan that has prioritization within rail and has a prioritization within bus, but how does it help us prioritize across rail and bus in how you're going to be spending your time? We know that the Housing Planning Department has limited resources. We cannot do everything. Really important part of this is the context-sensitive nature of the planning because these stations all look different. I know, you know, the few stations that I have in my district, you know, you have, they're literally in a floodplain, and it's going to look really different than places that are, you know, big transit centers in terms of the planning. So how are we, how do we prioritize across rail and bus? And then we have the factor that you brought up earlier about, you know, we're going to be making some investments and changing some things, and some things may be bus rapid until they become rail. How are we thinking about that prioritization? Because you cannot do 100 and 180 stations at once and do them in the context-sensitive way that they deserve and that you're saying they should be done.
I'll start, and then, and then I'm going to pass it to Stevie with a, with a couple of suggestions on what we talked about as we were discussing this all week. You know, from the perspective of the Project Connect Office, the Light Rail stations are definitely a priority, given where we are in the CIG Capital Improvement Grant process for new starts. They are absolutely a priority. We can focus even more on prioritization of the stations once we go through our public input process and public comment process on the scenarios that starts March 21st, that process. And so I would pass it to Stevie to talk about, there's ongoing planning work around transit that would continue, but I would hope that the coordination that happens and the syncing up of future planning work with the resources that we have would be focused to the Light Rail stations that are part of the scenarios that the community has told us are a priority.
Yeah. And I'll just add to that. I think what is in the proposal that is on council's dais this week really considers the workload impacts of the work by moving in the direction of developing the ETOD overlay, which would not be the be-all and end-all like that. I want to be really clear, the ETOD overlay is a tool to get our system part of the way there. It is not a blanket, you know, rezoning or re-regulating of the entire system because we know we can't do that. we know we can't do that. But that tool at least allows us to shore things up on a system-wide level so that as we put focused resources into those actual detailed station area or corridor-based planning activities along the line, we aren't waiting across the entire system for something to happen. The ETOD overlay would be the tool that kind of shores things up temporarily with a particular set of regulations and then we would be focusing planning resources. Our year-one work program at this point is really focused around station areas that we've already initiated. So North Lamar Transit Center in partnership with Capital Metro, South Congress Transit Center in partnership with Cap Metro, we've already actually been outworking in community with the leadership of Capital Metro over the last couple of months on station area planning in those two locations as directed by council in November. And then the Northeast Austin District Plan, which has already been initiated and has a lot of station areas within that planning area, making sure that we're leveraging those resources. But in terms of future years of planning, we have, you know, recommendations in the ETOD policy plan for how to prioritize stations. The way that we want to prioritize stations may differ. Once we work with community to figure out what the initial investment is moving forward, there's definitely the opportunity for council to provide direction on what that sort of year-two and beyond work program look like or to add additional resources to try to shift it ahead to be a year-one work program. But I definitely, you know, hear the concerns about resources. And that's really the philosophy of the plan and the reason why there is the recommendation to put in place the interim regulations and to put in place the ETOD overlay at a system-wide level is to make sure that we have something in place while we are working towards allocating planning resources to do the more specific focused planning in the corridors that need it.
Thank you. I'd love to hear more about the ETOD overlay, but I want to pause here and just speak to the interim city manager here. I don't think this plan tells us that we're prioritizing rail over bus. I, you know, I understand, I'm not sure, I totally understand what's going to be in that ETOD overlay and it's not created, so maybe I'm not supposed to. But, you know, is there something that we need to add in this resolution or, you know, is that just understood that we are going to be thinking through that? I mean, how would we, how do we make that happen within this plan when we have limited resources and we have to make choices?
Well, let me ask this, staff. I think from the discussion, it's clear that rail is the priority. I mean, it's the, how we word that or how we put into this resolution comments or a sentence or two or whereas, I think that would be helpful so that we have that clear direction from the council that that's not just from the discussion today, but that's kind of from the history, that's what we want to get, or get it achieved.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, I just want, we don't know what's going to come out on March 21st, so that would broadly, you know, there may be some stations that are transitioning from BRT to rail and those might be treated differently. But I just, I think that the worry is that we're going to spend time, you know, on transit stations on Lamar that are in a floodplain versus doing them on the rail, you know, in the rail centers, et cetera.
Well, I think that, I mean, here's what I've heard, is that we need better definition around each of these tools and transit modes. So we'll have that. And if we need to emphasize that rail is the priority, then that'll be easy for us to do. And that's where, I mean, that's where we'll focus our work and then to the degree that, to do that to the degree that we don't end up compromising any of the grant process for the Federal Transportation Administration to award to us. So we can work through that.
And we'll work with law on that.
Yeah, that would be, that would be appreciated. Mayor, I have a question about the ETOD overlay, but I can read if other good folks.
Yes, Mayor Protem.
A bit of interesting conversation about prioritization. The Oak Hill Metro Rapid was very, very early to be identified as behind the mark for land use planning. Some of the other Metro Rapids were able to get out the door and have documents submitted to the federal government and the Oak Hill line is still not quite up to that level of being able to have the, it's not scoring high enough. So I think it's really important, even though we know that the rail lines are going to have higher ridership, they're going to have different land use patterns that are needed because of the proximity and the population served, but we cannot forget about that Pinnacle Campus, that park-and-ride. You know, we in Southwest Austin have, I think, four bus routes, four, and two of them overlap. And the one near me runs every 35 minutes. So if we're going to get serious about people being able to participate in the mode shift goal, we can't forget about some of the ones that are way farther behind. So I understand if there's certain nuances around floodplains or things like that, but all those tracts of land heading out to the Pinnacle Campus, they predate SOS, they need to have their parking lots taken out, their end-to-end concrete, they don't have stormwater controls, a lot of them. And so I'm just really worried that if we try to get the rest of the plan right before we start talking about what land use patterns need to be happening at the Metro Rapid for Southwest Austin, we're going to entirely miss the boat. So I just want to make sure that we're looking at this in a way of all parts of this community, you know, participate in Project Connect, they pay into the TRE that voters approved. And I want to make sure that we are not going to end up at the bottom of the list simply because we don't have a lot of ridership right now. We need to be making more efforts to encourage ridership in Southwest Austin and I want to make sure that Oak Hill is not forgotten. I don't know if you have any comments on that or if that's more of a stump speech, but...
The only comment that I will make is the plan itself did include a planning prioritization activity where we looked at all of the 98-station pairs and developed sort of a priority list based on three factors. And the three factors were sort of the presence of publicly-owned land, the amount of recent sort of change and churn that we're seeing in that location, both in population and employment, as well as looking at some economic real estate metrics related to improvement value to land ratio to try to figure out how likely that place is to redevelop in the next near term to make sure that we're getting planning ahead of that. So that was the prioritization method that staff used to kind of identify a ranked list, if you will, of where we would recommend services move first, but we can definitely look at adding additional criteria to that and we can definitely look at adding additional direction through the resolution, one way or the other. And I guess that is a response to your question, Mayor Protem, and that that was really looking at it neutral to whether it was rail or rapid bus, so we were looking at the full system with that analysis.
Yeah, I appreciate, and I know that central part of the district is where a lot of the market rate affordable housing is. And I know with the ACC bond, where they included dollars for redevelopment of the Pinnacle Campus, I really want to make sure that we are, you know, we're thinking way ahead of the game here because things could redevelop at some point and we will have missed the boat and lost our chance at getting more affordable housing into that central part of my district.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Poole.
I wanted to add on to what my colleague, Mayor Protem Ellis, is saying, including our work together, which you are newly appointed to Cap Metro, which I'm really glad about. Maybe we can work together with the service, the route distribution with Cap Metro to analyze that and see if there's ways that we can send more buses to that part of the city. And then also I'd be curious to know if any of the, is it the Start Grant, the Smart Grant? Small Start Grant might be appropriate for the southwest part of the city, just asking. We've gotten grants for the northeast district, we got $600,000 for that planning effort and we got almost a million for the blue and orange line. So there's funding out there and perhaps your part of the city, we could do some focus on.
I'd appreciate that and any guidance you have to lend me on better advocating for our bus routes, even the regular ones in Southwest Austin. But yeah, I know that there's a lot of people who want to ride the bus and there's a lot of people excited for Metro Rapid and I want to help make that vision a reality.
Councilmember Ryan Alter and then Councilmember Allison Alter.
I'm curious, at a more fundamental level, as y'all are planning forward, what do you envision coming first? The infrastructure, the transportation infrastructure and then the housing and development that support that or vice versa, where we get the housing and that other development and then bring the transportation to it? You know, I hear we're talking about the northeast bus rapid and it seems like we're doing more of the former, where we're bringing the infrastructure and then developing around it. But I'm wondering, are we, it seems like we'll always be playing catch-up, right? We'll be years behind. If we bring a station and then zone and then allow it to go through the process to develop, you know, we'll be many years behind in terms of actually utilizing the investments. I'm just trying to understand how y'all envision that.
Yeah, and I'd just say, I think it's a little bit of, the reality is a little bit of both. The ideal, which nobody is ever going to hit in any city in the history of cities, would be, I think, to have the land uses in place, but like the day that transit opens, right? Because you don't want a lag time, you don't want the, you don't want high-intensity, dense, walkable development without any way to get there without a car. And the longer that lag time is, the longer that's the case, right? So, you know, in an ideal universe, you would have the land uses and then the transit, but with, you know, a very little lag time. In reality, it's going to be coming online simultaneously and in some cases, there will be development that happens years later.
Well, I would, I would recommend erring on the side of development a little earlier, given how that has been a great challenge and is much, is often slower than we think it's going to be, given some of the other administrative side of things, so that maybe we do end up actually having them line up because of that challenge.
And where we have the ability to influence that, we certainly will. That's with publicly-owned land, that's with our ability to acquire property along the areas or along the transit, the station areas. I think ideally, we would be able to do that and that is one of the goals we're pursuing.
And the interim city manager just committed to fixing the permit process tomorrow, so...
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'm ready.
Councilmember Allison Alter.
And I think, I'm sorry, Mayor, I think Ms. Pine wanted to add something on that.
If I could, if you indulge me, just to one other thing on that, just looking at other cities really across the country when they've planned and built new light rail systems. You know, one thing about light rail is once you locate it, like it does not move, at least not very easily. And...
Thus the word fix.
Thus the word fixed.
I'm learning so much.
I think you'll see sort of experiences that, you know, development activity and around station areas happens very, very early, during the planning process and kind of some lessons learned or that you almost can't plan for it too early or otherwise you can't control it or, you know, you've kind of lost your opportunity.
Councilmember Allison Alter.
Thank you. First, I want to just respond to Mayor Protem Ellis's comments on Oak Hill and I really appreciate that context and, you know, the government investments that are being made in that area. My initial question was how are we prioritizing across the two because we have a prioritization for one and a prioritization for the other? You know, and I just looked at it and Oak Hill is listed among the high priorities for BRT and so it may be some combination. I don't know what the right answer is for the prioritization, but we do have to have some prioritization and I think we give folks an impression that we're doing something, you know, we have limited resources, let's make sure that we're spending those in the best places. But I can't tell from having two separate ones where that should be or to guide people to help them understand when we would be doing that. So I think some clarification of how we would do that would be, would be important because obviously the Metro Rapids are important, but they are still a different animal with respect to the FTA process that we're looking for. My other question had to do with the ETOD overlay. So you mentioned that, you know, part of what we were doing was to create this ETOD overlay so we wouldn't be absent of regulation in these areas without, you know, before we did the small area planning. But that concept is still very vague and I think it is causing concern in the community and it would be helpful to have some clarification because I think it's one of these like, this is a zoning jargon that nobody understands and on the face of it sounds, sounds very scary, but it's not clear what the scope of that is and whether, you know, something like rezoning, single-family homes is in that overlay or, you know, what exactly are the kinds of things that could go in that overlay as you envision it? And I understand that the existing TOD overlay is fairly minimal in terms of the basics that are in that. So it would also be helpful if you could provide some insight on how that would compare.
So I'm going to, or Rosie, would you like to...
No, I was just going to say, Warner and Steve, you're going to make it not scary. That's the attempt. We're going to demystify it.
So I'm going to sort of provide very high level what's being recommended by the resolution and then turn it over to Warner to talk a little bit about what the plan actually describes as a possible ETOD overlay because what we're really talking about is sort of based on the plan document itself and the toolkit, the tool that's in there. But what is, what's envisioned at a very high level based on the resolution is that we would identify an appropriate boundary. So we would have to do boundary setting at the station areas. And within that boundary, it would apply a set of regulations that a property owner could choose to opt into. So the base zone regulations would still be in effect, but the property owner, similar to but not the same as VMU and similar to but not the same as the NO overlay, because that's, the details are what still need to be developed and what I'm going to have Warner talk about. The property owner would be able to make the choice to either develop under the base zone entitlements or provide community benefits in exchange for additional entitlements. And those community benefits could be a variety of things. They would probably definitely include housing affordability, but there are other community benefits that we might look at based on the direction from the community and the ETOD plan. Those entitlements that they would be trading community benefits for could be things like height and flurial ratio, but the level that we're setting those trade-offs at is not being set. This is really, at this point, they would be set in the code amendment that would ultimately come back to council to have a conversation around. But at this point, the initiation would be to have the community dialogue, to look at the best practices, to look at the calibration of the market and what the market will actually deliver in order to propose both the boundaries and the regulations that would apply. Those regulations could also include regulations around preservation and around tenant protections if we applied that overlay to, say, an existing development that included housing and it's similar to what we did with the VMU too last year where we've put in place some pretty heavy-duty preservation as part of that tool. We are referencing a tool that was developed in the toolkit that Capital Metro and their consultant team in partnership with community delivered that describes it a little bit more and I'm going to turn it over to Warner to kind of provide any additional detail that may be in the plan and at least to tell you a page number to look on.
Yeah, I can definitely give a page number. A 58 and 59 is kind of where we lay out this idea of an overlay for affordable housing. I think Stevie did a great job of explaining the extent of what we know because we don't know yet what those bonuses should be. We know that we've heard about things like childcare and about affordable nonprofit space and of course, affordable housing. So we know that there's like a realm of community benefits, but we need to figure out which ones are most appropriate where, what the community is interested in. We also need to think about what additional entitlements could be offered in exchange for those benefits where they actually get built. You know, for instance, the plan talks about the current fee-in-lu part of a lot of our programs maybe isn't necessarily calibrated right, so that's an important aspect. We'd need to think about whether a fee-in-lu was even allowed. And then, as Stevie said, the half-mile kind of planning boundary, the circle, we don't envision that that's where the overlay exactly applies in the future. We need to work with community to figure out where it applies. And there might be certain types of property it doesn't, doesn't apply to as far as existing uses. It might apply to all, but there'd be different kind of like sub-levels in there or, as Stevie said, preservation levels. You know, these are just things that we've looked at from across the country and heard during our feedback, but we're not yet at all sure what they would be because we need to talk to our community, we need to talk with our partners, we need to talk with developers of private, public, and nonprofit so that we can understand what would make sense in one typology or on a rapid versus a rail station, right? That's another factor we need to think about as well.
Thank you. Can you also speak to the value capture ideas that you have? We've recently been learning more about some of the other cities and how they're using that in Texas to get affordable housing, which we have not really successfully been doing. Can you speak to how you're envisioning that part working and when that would happen in this process because it's sort of, the sooner that happens, the more money you have? And as I understand it, if we want to make the ETODs successful, we have to... this process? Because it's sort of, the sooner that happens, the more money you have. And as I understand it, if we want to make the ETODs successful, we have to, we have to be shaping them, and the value capture is really one of the ways that that's being done, and really different ways in other cities than how we've been thinking about.
So when we say value capture, at least from, I've heard it kind of described this way at planning conferences lately, that includes things like trading entitlements for community benefits. But are you, or so are you speaking in general, or are you speaking like TERS?
I'm talking about like a TIF or a TERS.
Okay. So we have definitely, there is, there are tools related to kind of innovative gap financing that are listed in the toolkit with the description, and TIF, TERS is not the only innovative financing kind of gap financing tool out there. There's also some rotating loan funds through the Build America Grant Program that we've heard a lot about recently. And I think the plan is to kind of continue having conversations with our partners in the Financial Services Department and with other city departments, including Economic Development and AEDC, that do this kind of, this kind of work to provide that sort of layered capital and figure out value capture, to identify whether there are stations that would make sense for those tools. At this point, I know that, you know, I am not the, I am not the expert on tax increment finance. I do know that our Financial Services Department has some fiscal policies in place that are in place for very good reasons to keep us solid and solvent as a city. And so the conversations will need to include the Financial Services Department. But we have had the initial conversations as part of the work to develop the toolkit and envision those conversations will continue.
Thank you. Did you want to add? No, I was just going to say, I mean, we're happy if there are additional questions that you want to submit through Q and A. We're happy to work with FSD to try to get those answered before the Thursday meeting.
Yeah, I don't know that they need to be in the plan for this week as much as I wanted to make sure that we were really looking at those seriously, because, you know, we're, you know, you have limited time, but there is a time, you know, that's another way that you make this happen, that if we wait three years to do, it's going to be problematic to be able to leverage it to actually accomplish any of those goals that we're guiding that have to happen from a money, money standpoint.
Correct.
Councilmember Vail.
This question is from Ms. Pine. My understanding is that we're planning on about a 50% federal grant match from the government. Is that correct?
Yes, that's our current assumption that we're comfortable with, yeah.
But we're not guaranteed by any means to get that 50%. What are the ranges of federal kind of shares that you've seen out with the New Starts projects?
So you're right that it's not guaranteed. I'd say it's not guaranteed until we sign the grant agreement, really, but 50% has been a pretty reasonable assumption for most projects of this sort. It really varies a lot depending on conditions. It can be as low as 40%. I haven't seen too many higher than 50% lately, but it's interesting that there's actually quite a bit of funding for transit projects right now in DC. So it'll, we're kind of tracking that to see how things change. You know, certainly, what percentage you end up with is dependent on the merits of the project, certainly, but also other things, like the nature of the congressional appropriations, and what are the other projects in the pipeline that you're competing against. So not all things that are in your control. You know, the land use policy aspect is one of those areas that is, actually is within your control to influence.
And I appreciate that. And if that chart that you were showing with the different, kind of the scoring metrics, I mean, land use, economic development, environmental benefits, we're all on there. It's 16, 16, and 16. I mean, so just by my, just eyeballing that chart, you know, if you have good land use, then that's good economic development, and that also produces good environmental outcomes. So I just wanted to really emphasize that, you know, again, we don't have, you know, hard numbers on what this whole project is going to cost yet, but the difference between like a, you know, 45% match and a 50% match or a 55% match, I mean, that could be in the hundreds of millions of dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, it certainly could be.
So I just really want to emphasize that point, because what we're doing now in our ETOD policy could, you know, bring us hundreds of millions of dollars. And again, I mean, that could mean, you know, an extra station, you know what I mean? That could, that affects the scope of the project and how much we can build and all of that. So I just really want to emphasize that. What's a good, and I know you all have to go in about like five minutes or so.
Yeah.
But what's a good example of light rail land use planning? Like, what other cities would you look to and say, they did a good job with their New Starts plan?
Well, that's a tough one. I think, because a lot of it has to do with intentionality, right? That you are putting a policy in place to support, you're, these are mutually reinforcing investments and policies, you know, between the transit investment, land use, affordable housing, parking, you know, all of these factors. So I think the cities that have been most successful have had that kind of comprehensive view on how it all fits together and have, you know, kind of tended towards action. You kind of moved through the process so that, and just in terms of being competitive for federal funds, that's all part of everything that you're doing to position the project to be most successful.
Thank you. And just a couple of quick comments, really, but I really appreciate Councilmember Allison Alter's comments, both about prioritizing the light rail planning as opposed to, again, I mean, it's all important, but the light rail planning involves bringing down, you know, billions, you know, in federal dollars. And the light rail planning is really, has the potential to be transformative. So my sense would be the same, that, I mean, if I have to pick and choose, you know, what to work on first, what to prioritize, I pick, you know, light rail stops over anything else. And I also really appreciate the TERS comment. We're going to have to put in a lot of infrastructure investment into the corridor. I know there's been discussions with watershed about, you know, potential like, you know, watershed improvements. There's a lot of things. I mean, when we're tearing up the street to build a light rail, that's going to be really expensive. But, you know, while we're doing that, we have the opportunity to make additional improvements around there. And the question is, and it's a great timing, and we should probably do it, but where do we get the money? That's not the TRE money, can't go to, you know, watershed improvements. So I kind of look over to the, some kind of TERS around, you know, the light rail kind of map, and we can use that for infrastructure improvements, we can use that for affordable housing. So, and again, to her comment, the sooner we do it, the better. I was talking with Sinclair Black on the Reconnect Austin stuff, and, you know, he was, how do we pay for, you know, caps on I-35 and that kind of stuff like that? He was like, you know, we need to do a TERS on, around, you know, the I-35, the portion that's going to get redeveloped. And he was like, the time to do the TERS was 10 years ago. And, I mean, I think he's right. So to that, I think we need to take a really hard look at, you know, the infrastructure investments that we need to make around the light rail and how we're going to finance it. And I think the sooner that we make those decisions, the more value we capture. So again, I appreciate those comments from Councilmember Alter.
And just noted, and we'll work with Financial Services on that.
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
Just in the, because you asked sort of about national examples, I did want to acknowledge that our partners at Capital Metro did work with their consultant team to put, take together some best practices as part of the equitable TOD work that are available on the website that look at places like Seattle, San Jose, Denver, Raleigh, Atlanta, Tacoma Park, Langley Park, Maryland, as well as Chicago, which is really sort of the origins of the idea of this kind of equitable TOD plan that we looked to as well. And on the point of sort of TERS and tools, I think the point that the equitable TOD policy plan that we're presenting this week is making is that we need all the tools in the toolbox. No one tool is going to get us to where we need to go. And so really, you know, we're hopeful that we're setting ourselves on a course of synchronizing and using the various tools that we do have at our disposal to make the vision of equitable TOD reality in Austin. Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you all for a really good discussion. I think the whole council, I can speak to the whole council, that we appreciate the level of detail. You obviously want to say something.
I do want to say one thing. The information I sent to you last night, I'm going to whip it into a memo and send it out through official distributions and load it as backup to the items, so everyone will have access to it.
That's great. And before everybody leaves, and I know we've, people got planes to catch, but if you're, if you're with Capital Metro and you're here today to help us out, would you stand up? Yeah, there they are, yeah, good. I just want to recognize y'all for taking time to be with us today. There's a lot of folks working on this and helping us out. So thank you all. I hope there's not any traffic going to the airport. Thanks. Okay, members, that'll take us to a discussion on item number 22. That item was pulled by Councilmember Ryan Alter. While staff is coming up, is there going to be, I'll recognize Councilmember Ryan Alter.
I just have a very brief question related to this as it pertains to prioritization or how we're choosing what gets funded from the capture of these funds. You know, we have the exhibit that kind of talks about all the various options of things that we're going to do with these funds, but I'm just curious.
If y'all could hang on to your conversations until you get outside, it would help us. Thank you.
Who will be making these decisions? Is there a prioritization list that will just go down? How does, how does that work, you know?
Good morning, councilmembers. Richard Mendoza, interim Transportation Director, and thank you for your question. Councilmember, also joined by Assistant Director, Mr. Segura, and then.
Jason Redford.
Jason Redford, Parking Manager. Okay. Certainly, yeah, the proposed parking management, parking management district is set up so that revenues that are derived from that, that parking district can then be reapplied into infrastructure improvements. And right now, the process is that the Transportation Department works with the community to identify those mobility improvements. Typically, they're around safety, extension of sidewalks, crosswalk improvements, you know, bike ped safety connecting to transit. And it varies. And so the process is, we work with the community, we work with all the stakeholders to develop a candidate list of improvements. Of course, you know, it's dependent on the revenue that we derive. And once funded, then we assign a project manager and move forward with those improvements.
Well, I had an individual ask me specifically about sidewalks, and so you touched on that. I just wanted to understand how the, if there was any kind of prioritization or whatnot, but I think you touched on it, so that's all I've got, just appreciate it.
Anybody else got anything? Yes, Councilmember Poole.
This is on a different item, though.
Oh, well, let's go to the other item.
All right.
Anybody got any questions on this item? Great. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate that.
Mayor, I just wanted to note on item 25, which our colleague, Councilmember Ryan Alter, is bringing, and that's the Charter Review Commission proposing some amendments. And we really have to be proactive in this area, and that's why I would like to have my name added in support of this item, to be one of the cosponsors, if that would be okay with the bringer of the resolution.
Always. I appreciate it. And I know you've done some work on this, and appreciate working with you on it.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember.